...in ten percent was it over the what since two thousand twelve?
The overall, the overall is a little bit over.
Four percent since then, these numbers have grown from that. One thing to note is our ELL enrollment numbers in the high school have remained constant. What we're seeing is what we refer to as newcomers, students who come in with limited formal education. That number has increased, so students who have not been in school or coming with very limited schooling has grown from a class where we had enrollment of thirteen to sixty. So that number is growing a lot. As we go through the data points here, the blue and red.
It is red.
Most people use red and green, but Mr. Donovan is colorblind and cannot tell the difference between red and green, so he doesn't know what he's looking at. So everyone in high school knows which is either blue or red or a little yellow, just so you know. You'll look at the red is DHS and the state of Connecticut is blue. While we are still under the state of Connecticut, you will notice in two thousand twelve and thirteen, we were at seventy-eight point nine percent. It's a cohort graduation rate, now we're up to eighty-three percent. Now, I got to pause for a second and explain what cohort is, if anybody doesn't know. That is four years. So the moment the student steps in as a freshman, four years later, they have to have that diploma in hand. So eighty-three percent of our students do receive that within that four-year timeframe. Looking at the numbers behind that, there's a couple of things that I have to draw your attention to. One, that you'll see in two thousand twelve, Joe, shut it off. We were at twenty-eight hundred students, twenty-eight hundred seventy-eight, now we're over three thousand seventy-seven with actually more last year. So we're up three hundred students over that time period as well. But as you go through, you'll see the percentages of our demographics that go through the school. Notice in our free reduced lunch one up is now at fifty-seven point nine percent. Here's our four-year cohort graduation rate, broken down a little better into different categories that we all look at and study at the high school a lot. All students is eighty-three percent, and then through there you'll see the cohort graduation rate. Things that pop out of us right away is that our ELL students, our students that come here with limited language experience are extremely lower than everybody else at fifty percent. Now, that's important to understand and take it as a different number, and I'll explain it a little bit later, is that we're talking about students that step into ninth grade as ELL students and are expected, just as our traditional students are, to graduate within four years. It may take them a little bit more time to acquire the language and stick to the requirements that we need that we put forward because we believe that when the piece of paper that they get that says Danbury High School at the end of it, it's gotta be worth something and they have to have the skills. So before we talk about those expectations, just because they come in as a freshman does not mean they lower their expectations because their language is different. They have to get to certain points and do that part. You'll also notice that our free reduced lunch, the students who are eligible for that has grown, but not as much as we had wanted liked it to. And the other one that is lower that pops off the page for all of us is our special education population, which is still only at sixty-six point seven percent for the four-year cohort. But you will notice it's grown about sixteen percent since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen graduation rate. This is important for us because this is the students that are still enrolled after four years, which means students that stay with us a little bit longer. All of our students is six point nine percent. So when we talk about our eighty-three percent graduation rate in four years, we have another six point nine that stay with us to get those extra credits they need to graduate. So we don't get credit in the four-year cohort for them. They will graduate whether it's five or even six years because as we mentioned before, a large portion of them are ELL students that need to stay a little longer and our special education students. We have in our academy several students that were stable at school twenty-one. They do not fall into the four-year cohort, they did not graduate from Danbury High School, and we don't want them to. They need to stay for those services that we provide as a district in what we refer to as Danbury High School as the academy. And if you look at that going down, you will see that our special education students that are still enrolled after two thousand eighteen.
Yes, I was about to sneeze.
Oh, sorry. Is twenty-one percent. So they're still in the school, they just didn't hit the four-year cohort mark. As same thing with our ELL students, twenty-four point six percent of them are still enrolled in Danbury High School of those students that did not graduate within the four years. Our students that fit in the other category are what we would consider, and if you see the notes on the next page, students that we would consider traditional dropouts. But I will put a caveat on this as well. Any student that has come to us and has been there four years and now is supposed to be graduating and may not have enough credits, the seven to two hundred and eighty day a year may not be working for them. They're older now, they can get jobs, so a lot of those students will leave us a couple of credits short of graduating and go to what we refer to as adult ed or re-raise here in Danbury. We do not get credit for those students, they're considered dropouts. So if a student comes to us and says, "I really need to go to work, I gotta provide for, and I'm moving out of my house, I'm doing this at eighteen, nineteen years old," we would suggest adult ed to them if they have to do a job during the day. And adult ed isn't that number, we don't get credit for any of those. There's the notes how this works. Calculating the graduation rate, the four-year graduation rate is your standard diploma within four years, including early, but if someone's there longer than that, it doesn't work, they don't fall into this number. So how does that also affect us? We have a pretty decent-sized migrant population in Danbury High School. So if a student comes to us freshman year in January and they step into Danbury High School, they're part of this four-year cohort. Now mathematically, there's no way they're gonna graduate in four years. They could be an A student, but unless they double up on the classes they wanna take and if they at the time need classes and possibly not have a lunch, they mathematically couldn't do it. They are already a semester behind us, which coming in with those new graduation requirements that you're all aware of is one of the reasons you switch to a different schedule, take that lunch and kind of let it out. So they come in as a freshman in February or January, they hit the second semester, they get all nineties and hundreds in their classes, they're still two point five credits short or three point five credits short. So mathematically, there's no way that next year they're becoming sophomores. So a lot of times when we load up the classes for them, we can sometimes get close to skipping and catching them up, but that student's really gotta be dedicated for it and really have to take those extra classes to catch them back up in missing that first semester. Some of the things we've done, we've run a week called Twilight, which is school after school, which allows students to get credit they may have missed in the first semester because if you come in and see even October of the first semester, you're not gonna get credit for that class that you took unless you came in with grades. But if you came in with no grades from your sending school, you're not gonna get credit for that first semester. So what we do is run an after-school class in which they can make up that seat time and learn the information that they missed between September and say October, and then we rank them credit for the first semester. So that's one way we're trying to get credetainment back. The second way is this summer, we ran an ESL summer school, tried to. Just free of charge, we only had very little interest. In the beginning, we thought we did, but when it actually came to kids going to school in the summer, it really wasn't something they wanted to do, whether they had jobs to go to and things like that. So it was just one more thing we tried to get credit to get them on track for graduation.
So after our kids leave us, we've been tracking the last three years college admission information. We recognize that all the students who are gonna go to college but early believe that it's our responsibility to make sure that they're prepared. And our message to the student body is let us help you through the application process. Even if you're planning on taking a bridge year, you haven't figured out the finances, while you have us as a resource, lean on us and let us help you through the process. And so the data in front of you now reflects how we've been doing with the college admission data. As of January thirteenth, seventy percent of our students, seniors, have submitted an application. Seventy-seven percent if you disaggregate from ESL and special education population. The other piece that we're looking at are if they started or are they finishing it, right? So we can help kids get that process started, but are looking also at the submission rates, which have been extremely high. Close secondary data is what Dr. Paschereau referred to at the beginning. The persistence rate is what is referred to as the rate in which a student who completes their freshman year of college returns for a sophomore year. And so here are some interesting points we thought that you would like to be made aware of. Sixty-five percent of our students enroll in the fall immediately after they have graduated. Seventy percent at any time, seventy-five percent within the first two years of high school. The last bullet point we're extremely proud of, our persistence rate for students returning for a sophomore year is eighty-seven percent, which is thirteen percent higher than the national average. And we ascribe a number of things to that data point. Mr. Donovan indicated earlier, the dramatic increase of students who are taking the opportunity of a good placement certainly helps. And we have expectations for students. You know, as Dan said in the beginning, these data points are all in the midst of us detracking the high school, increasing graduation requirements before we went to twenty-five. And so we think that all of those moves really helps to contribute to the success of our students after they have graduated. So just a couple of things that have gone on that we think impact these data. As I mentioned, the increased expectations and the detracking, the newcomer course that we've created, trying to be responsive to the needs of our students, particularly the L population. During these years, we also had deans of student support and a school client specialist who helped us with some of the students who had needed extra support. The PSYOP coaches were reduced to one, who still have one, for which we are very grateful. Support teachers with coaching in the classroom, particularly around strategies to support second language learners. The Twilight School that Mr. Donovan mentioned, we started really small with that as a mechanism to try and help freshmen leave freshman year on time because that's the biggest indicator whether or not a student is going to graduate on time. And so we saw good results from that Twilight program after school and have expanded it, including sections for ESL students who may have arrived mid-year. We did attend the ELL summer program that didn't get off the ground, but we're gonna continue trying. The block schedule inflects this year, it's too soon to provide you any information on the impact that has had, but certainly giving students real-time access to supports from their classroom teachers can't hurt. And so we hope that that will also contribute to increase, say, the graduation rates, which is certainly our goal. A lot of concerted professional development efforts have happened amidst all of this, and we have cadres of teachers participating in something called instructional rounds. This model really after the medical community, where we go into a classroom, we talk about it, teachers develop professional development for their colleagues, and that's been extremely helpful. So as Dan indicated, we look at this information a lot. There are a number of different structures that we utilize to look at this information. We have a school data team comprised of our administrators and department heads. And these are some of the questions that we're really grappling with that are certainly connected to these data sets. You know, the achievement gaps continue to concern us, we will continue to be focusing on disaggregating our data to make sure we have a sense of where each population is. And really, this overage, undercredited student, we need to look at some different kinds of programming for that, for those individuals. Interventions prior to high school, I know that's something that the district is looking at. And really, the cultural responsiveness in the classroom, that's really the next professional development push that we need to engage in. So our next steps would be to continue teaching the teachers, teaching the administrators, learning from each other, looking to see if there are other programs in the district, in the state, across the country that we can be learning from. The State Department has just made available last month something they're calling the Early Morning Indicator Dashboard. They just brought high school online to that, so I'm not conversant with it yet. They still haven't unleashed all of the features, but hopefully that will help us as a learning organization to be able to intervene earlier with students who really need it. We need to evaluate our summer programming, you know, we talked to some students, "How come you didn't come? What can we do to get you here?" But we'll continue to do that. And then the next big move for us is that, you know, these data will not be comparable after the class of two thousand twenty-three because we're moving up substantially with the number of credits with which students need to graduate.
Questions?
To the chair. If we could go back to that slide, sorry. Regarding the breakdown of the ELL graduation rates, I have a couple of questions.
Joe, I shut it.
Joe?
Joe, I shut it.
Oh, wait, you can just answer a couple of questions, Mr. Donovan.
Sure.
What kind of ESL model of instruction are we predominantly using at the high school right now?
We use.
It's a bilingual education.
We have bilingual education for our Spanish and Portuguese students. Our Portuguese classes have not run for the bilingual due to lack of enrollment numbers for that, but Spanish has run. We have also used doubling down is what we call it, where we're using in the block, they're going every day as opposed to the traditional semester goes to English every other day, A B. They're going every day to give them more time on task in that class.
Okay. So, you know, when we look at those numbers and we try to be more proactive when we look at how that's going to continue to drag out as we get more students added to the population of the high school. In two thousand fifteen, there was a task force established by the state of Connecticut to look at some vast practices and things that could be done to improve ELL programs across the state. And one of the results of that report was to really allow people to look into piloting programs and exploring different ways to deliver ESL education, ELL education to different populations. So there's like the pull-out model, the pushing, the sheltered English. So I think that it's time, if we could, to one, get a presentation from that specific department about the benefits of continuing to use the models that we've been using to, if there's any appetite, really exploring a different way to look at how we're delivering ELL education when it comes to our students and their ability to hit the ground running, right? Because when you have a very transient migrant population like we do, where in Danbury you have constant new groups coming in and arriving, our arrival rate has not come down, and that's why we see this increase of the student population. And you have that big gap between their performance and the general population. You're also telling, I understand, different, you know, educational backgrounds that they're coming into. Some people, it's not just the language deficiencies, that they're actually having deficiencies in reading in their own, you know, native language, so there's a lot to make up there. But there's different ways to deliver ESL or ELL that can make up for that. And maybe what we need to look at is if it's time for us to change the strategy that we're dealing with this group because it's our reality. It's forty-five percent of the student population, and unless we try everything new out there, you know, we can't just kind of just continue to just have a traditional bilingual kind of model and not really look at other ways that people across the state have been trying to deal with this. Central University has a professor who's dedicated her life to language education system learning, and she has a bunch of information on that. I happen to know her and know her work, I would be happy to invite her one day to maybe do a meet with you guys, do a workshop. But I would like to get more information if we can in one of our meetings for more detail about the methods that we're using for ESL because it's clear in our data, and what we're saying is that those students are not performing at the same rate. And although I understand the issue with the arrivals mid, you know, semester, there's been people in other parts of the state that have dealt with that with different ways to deliver.
Wait.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Couple of questions, actually. The summer programming for ELL, you said it wasn't very effective.
It didn't happen. So we pulled focus groups of students, you know, what are some things? We looked at the actual population that we would be targeting to determine which course would be most beneficial for the largest number of students. The district was able to identify for transportation. But I think a number of kids, they were traveling over the summer is what I was told in, you know, after the fact, we didn't get their registrations. That was a piece of it. Childcare responsibilities for siblings, family members was another piece. And working, you know, a lot of our high school kids, no matter what subgroup you're populating, they're working. And so that was definitely a challenge. And actually, we learned about that type of model after exploring Norwalk because they had had some favorable increases and tried to learn. So we did, the department did go down to, what are you all doing? And so we tried to model it similarly, and it didn't get off the ground, but we will be trying again this year.
Are you finding a challenge in speaking the language or getting the information to these parents or these students? Along with that, is do we have a, do you have a rate of minority teachers that are being helpful with that? Or is there?
We have two very proactive ELL counselors that we push a lot of information for. In this particular case, we went to, I visited the ELL classes with Dr. Martin, tried to sales pitch this as best we could to get interest in it, the help of them, and thought, and we probably had the interest, that's why we went for it. At the time, you know, the students would say, "Yes, we'd be interested in doing this." We decided ESL two and all this other stuff to get them up to ESL three, and then we're looking to get some one, and then it came down to when things came up. But we use our ELL counselors are very proactive in getting stuff out, and we push information.
Our communications are always push out Spanish, Portuguese, and English. Excuse me. The other piece that we're planning to do next year is to start Twilight Semester One as opposed to Semester Two. So Twilight School happened as a credit restoration again for the aperitif freshman. We expanded that in partnership with WestCon or Con-Happ Program. We worked out a busing touring sort of arrangement. And that's been really mutually beneficial. And so we're gonna be looking at the summer enrollments. That's the other piece that's really tricky for us. You know, we're in the midst now of gearing up to do our schedule, which is a massive, massive, massive undertaking. And so we do the registration, we'll do that in March, but we had over a hundred students register over this, you know, just in a four-week timeframe. And so the programmatic needs are hard to predict. You know, we try and bond with as best we can to make sure that we have the staffing that we need, and the district's been really supportive of that. So we'll be looking to expand Twilight based upon those successes. Frankly, I think we have a better shot at increasing credits while the kids are still sort of captive and we have the bus that goes home.
We, I know you've given us an update on what you're trying to figure out with the extra credit requirements that are coming. Have you come to a solution on how you're gonna fit those extra credits in the flex period scheduling that you have?
Credits won't be in flex, flex is not a credit-bearing course. The schedule, the block schedule will allow us, allow the students basically three more opportunities to gain those credits. We are gonna be looking at, right now, we have three blocks a day in what we call a skinny at the end, which means every day, we are gonna be running a mock schedule and adding the fourth block to see if it can work. But if I put a whole bunch of students in study halls, which is what we had last year, we're not gonna run it. I don't want students sitting in study halls.
You're gonna exacerbate our issues with kids, even though academically they can perform. If they're behind in scheduling or in some credits, the twenty-five is gonna make it tougher for them, tougher for them to get through.
Sure.
And that's what we're trying to explain to folks.
We had about fifty percent of our seniors graduate last year with twenty-five or more, but for each one that doesn't, and we probably had about, you know, I think it was eighty-something that graduated with twenty-one. So those, those eighty-four credits more were three hundred and twenty more credits, which was three hundred and twenty more seats at class. So it's like, so these requirements are a big drain on our staff.
Aside from the data that you presented today, but relevant to public participation over tonight, how many counselors do you have at the ELL?
We have ten counselors in one department. It does six well.
Right. What is the average case over three?
Three hundred. I know our special education counselor is three thirty. Some of our freshman counselors are lower because we put a lot of, as you mentioned, all the way along, a lot of emphasis on the freshman transitional year. Try to get them through some of their numbers over the lower.
And the ELL, the two ELL counselors that you have, is your screen?
Yeah. Claudia's in the twenties. Yeah, she's three oh seven, I want to say, and changes. They're all, if they're not in the three hundred, they're in the two eighties, and she.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, did I understand you're going to re-attempt the ELL summer program?
We're gonna continue speaking to students about it, and actually, this is when we're doing our summer conversations. But my concern, as I know Dan shares, is that a lot of energy was expended, and I'm just afraid the answer's going to be the same.
Right.
But like also, you know, we will offer it, and if we have enough kids who are interested, then we're able to run it.
Any plans to do anything differently in the curriculum?
But we owe all yours for suggesting, sort of rattling off door.
Okay, and just, and the graduation requirement, we're planning on the twenty-five for this incoming freshman. Okay.
Yes.
And prior to that, it's twenty-one, before that, in two thousand eleven?
It was always twenty-one, the, it became more prescriptive. So students prior to that did not have to take chemistry, they did not have to take Algebra One, they did not have to take English Three. And so actually, a lot of the prescriptions from the new legislation where the twenty-five increase occurred, we've already done that. So for us, you know, there's a couple of pieces that we still have to iron out, but it's really the increased number of credits sort of combated with how many credit opportunities do they have. Something that we are seeing that I think is extremely hopeful, are more students are inquiring about taking college classes sort of à la carte, you know, and that's something that we would accept as transfer credits. And so we're seeing an increase in that. And hopefully, you know, students who really wanted to take calculus, were gonna take pre-cal, if not, it's okay, of course, that's okay, right? So we're trying to be flexible with accepting of credits through the university.
And my understanding is they did away with the senior project, whatever, the capstone?
It's still there, it's got the slash title.
That's released.
Diploma assessment. So we are waiting for the next three five, which will come out from the superintendent of organization that will hopefully give us some more direction on what exactly that means. But based on our understanding, have already begun planning for it.
Thank you.
I'll have one question, that's okay. Possibly a follow-up depending on the answer. Flex, I think, is fantastic, it's a great idea. Can you just give a minute on how that works?
Like the nuts and bolts, or how do you think it's going?
No, I'm not some boss because I know that it's, you screen different ways the students can get scheduled for it, and I hear like different things, so I just wanted to clarify.
So every Monday, students go to what we call Mentor Monday. They're in a room with a teacher, about seventeen kids, and that teacher and the students schedule them for the rest of that week, for the four flex. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The model is that student comes up, sits with the teacher, says, "Hey, you're not doing so well in English, I'm gonna put you in English twice." You cannot pull a, teachers are not supposed to pull students more than twice a week. That's one way it works. The way that it works beforehand is the teacher has Dr. Martin's in the class, and she's got a seventy with me, and I'm her English teacher. I pull her even before that Mentor Monday goes. So when they sit at the Mentor Monday, the Mentor Monday teacher goes, "Your book." You know, these teachers pulled you. And we're seeing a lot more teachers starting to do that because they're starting to work with specific groups of kids. We'll see even more of it as our AP start ramping up. They're pulling their AP kids in on a given day and working with just the AP students. So we allow the teachers to go through and say, "Okay, Tuesday is Algebra One day, Wednesday's Geometry, Thursday I'm back to Algebra One." Ten kids can go into there. We're seeing that there is the option to have students enroll themselves and start self-scheduling. We're almost there. You know, I think if you ask any of our students, any of our staff, they would tell you that the idea of the flex is really good, and that they're taking advantage of it, it's really useful for them.
Yeah, I think, that was my question. I know a student has the opportunity to schedule themselves, and they have to flex teacher, that's really neat on Mondays. And then the teacher, your grade falls a little certain.
Seven five.
They do it all night.
They're supposed to.
I think it's a genius idea.
Well, we, I didn't think of it, but I did. We stole it.
What a passion.
I knew that before, because I asked.
You know, what we also did too is we limited the number that the core teachers can have. This flex for, say, your English or math teacher is supposed to be specific to the needs of what's happening with that group. It's not supposed to be a study hall, you know? Obviously, if there are kids that are doing very well, and they only... Obviously, if there are kids that are doing very well and they only have one question of their math teacher. They go in, I didn't understand last night, told her to explain this question. Teacher does it, kid goes, I got it. Now they're in there for the next, you know, thirty-five minutes working on something else. You know, the extensions and enrichment parts are a little different. The, you know, extensions are, as you heard, tire changing, yoga on Fridays, mindfulness, things that want to go on. I know one teacher especially wanted, she makes jewelry on the side and then she wanted to go through and do that. That's totally allowed. There's a form that they have to fill out that has to be approved. So that's not happening because the main function of flex is to help students on the academics. But if there's fun stuff that you can do in an open gym and things like that, feel free to go. I know they started some weightlifting stuff. But you have to be an academic good standing to do that. The enrichments are labs. I know they did a DNA lab and science not too long ago and things like that.
Thank you.
As you mentioned, we're becoming more receptive or receptive of students getting college credit on the side. What's our policy regarding recognizing college credit?
So, sorry. So, right now, it's really largely silent policy-wise. We do have a policy existing on virtual learning, which probably needs to be revisited at some point. As the advent of those types of courses, you know, continue. It's a balancing act where we don't want kids to flip out, so to speak, through an online program that's, you know, too easy. And that it doesn't position them well for substitute courses. And so, that's a trickier thing. But with the university, we're treating it like an accredited university. Granted this credit and we will take it as a transfer. Transfer credits don't count towards GPA or class rank. And so, that seems to be working out pretty well. I just met with a young woman who just learned she's moving and she only needs an English class to graduate. She wants to walk with her class. And so, we were looking at different opportunities, NOCT, WestCon, that will afford her the opportunity to be able to walk with her class weight proportions. You know, we don't follow up with local high schools or high schools in the, in the, in the United States or anywhere else for that matter to determine, you know, what was the curriculum of this Algebra class that you granted. So we feel pretty good about, you know, taking a transfer credit from an accredited university at a college level.
Maybe if we can revisit this, Dr. Sal as well, anything we can do to support the work that you guys are doing in terms of recognizing college credit? Whether we need to help you or implement the policy to help you guys out or whatever.
A policy, very good now. It permits us to accept the credits that she's talking about. It's not restrictive, it's open, so long as it's an accredited organization. So that's work. Policy, we were looking at some options. If they go to 25, it can be venues for credits to allow students to get through and open up their time to take the course if they want. That's, that's what we need to look at. So, the 25s go through. We just met recently with some options in that part of it.
Thank you.
No, except for the board. The DECO program, the AP program, the collaboration you have with WestCon. You've got shared staff with WestCon, UConn. All of that goes to the rigor of the school in terms of the presentation in the classrooms. And one of the things that happened some years ago by reducing the number of options that kids were placed into inappropriately in our view. Where they really were not challenged, the pacing did not match where they needed to be. By board permitting us to limit those times, we thought about detracting, adding the rigorous courses. You've increased the number of kids that are taking risks. The kids that are staying, even the honors and college prep courses have their rigor there and they're exposed to it. That's why you're seeing that fifth year rate being as high as it is. You know, it takes some time for that to go out. One of the big conversations that we had was with Gary Fikachi, may recall, about the final exams and the impact that would have. That's increased time on tasks. They still give exams, not that they don't. It's just not in that format. And we're not, we're finding the impact, things like the kids are performing and doing though. That was one of our, you know, what's going to happen when you're approached with a blue book. Those exams are not given that way anymore. They're given more in different formats. But I think all those things you've permitted us to work on is really beginning to gain some thread. And the kids are stepping up to play as they can, because they have the abilities. Even if they come with deficits, kids have it to do. So we clearly have work to do, particularly in those areas we call the super bucket of kids that traditionally come in. The greatest predictor of lack of success for students is, it's not their ethnicity, it's their poverty level. It doesn't matter, so we know that. So we keep working on drawing kids. Someone mentioned going to other schools, the men. Schools that have been successful, we try to visit. We visit a number of where the L kids are really gaining an extra time. Either after school in the Twilight or the summer program, things of that nature. Or giving them exams that they can pass because of their abilities and granting credit. Those are things that we need to keep working on to bring them to that point where they can finish our time and move through our school. For everyone else. So I thank you for that. Makes a difference.
Has anybody's any follow-up questions or? No. Anybody has any questions or follow-ups, always know where we are from Saturday to every day, so feel free to. Feel free to stop by. Thank you.
Megan, do you have an actual copy I need?
I do not. I'm crazy.
Dan, could you get that light first up?
I moved that Board of Education except for December twenty eighteen operating results analysis, Jones one, Grant one, in accordance with exhibit nineteen dash nineteen, page twenty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second advice from Katrina? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any favor? Send to me. Dr. Harries. Dr. Stowe.
I intended a meeting and I put in a book, public policy for our legislative agenda. You know, we'll be, Dr. talked to Ryan today, Bigum. He's moving that to the forward. Ken's getting any report for the two-year substitute associate's degree of thirty hours. For some reason, I don't know, so I'll be going up there asking him why not. But that's one area that we could use some help in. The funding issue with the 25, not that we think it's not a good idea to get 25. I think Dander has made some adjustments five years ago. The kids have sequencing courses, taking lab tests, and there were good courses. Twenty-five, I really don't think can help this. Particularly when using money for the resource, counselors, social workers, more bilingual staff. It's just going to eat up in your core academic area. Like Dan said, many kids are ready to take a 25. So we're advocating for them to go back to the 21. Giving the boards the ability to do 25, 26, whatever you want to do. Or stay with 21 as a minimum. So working on all of those activities. We're going to have folks, Ryan will meet people that go up and testify and I'll let you know how that goes. We did meet Ridgefield the other day. Ridge was there and Mr. Janelle was there, along with a number of districts. And we co-listed around the same things. So hopefully, we'll get some of the things done that we need. K legislation's the same and they're asking for many of the same things that we are. We're working with them and cause as well, so they're all kind of on the same page. On the seventeenth, we had an incident over at Ellsworth. You may know of, really hasn't, we haven't had a resolution to the problem in terms of what had happened and individuals involved. We talked to the police yesterday, just don't investigate us as far as we know. But I'll tell you that what the staff did and how they handled it was really remarkable. Again, it happened at three twenty-five, right when the kids were ready to go. But the way they responded, the police department working with us, even at the end of the incident when the offenses were released, the police were present. They escorted kids home because we have a number of walkers in that vicinity. They were there. And you may recall the lessons that we have with the WestCon. One of the things we talked about after debriefing, the chief was going to put someone in our office and they did. They had someone in our office, so we knew exactly what was going on during everything. So we were able to really understand what was happening in real time and give advice to the school. Today, we did a debriefing of that. We have some other things that we need to do that we think will be even more effective. Unfortunately, every time these things happen, and they do happen, there are things that you catch and say, whoops. And then do it differently and that's what we're working on now. Last meeting, someone talked about band uniforms, you may remember. We did follow up with that and Joe's been working with them and see what we can do to help them along. Because they've worked pretty hard in raising funds, so we continue working with them on that. Before I get off the seventeenth, I'll ask anybody out here, if they had anything, Joe or Kim, even in meetings, anything you want to add.
I thought having the police on the side was invaluable. We had them necessarily get in contact with the chief and have places that had those. My time is intense. Always wanted to do that.
You know, here's the thing that happens, and I said this before. The first thing I worry about are the kids. So, you know, we deal with that first and then next, we have the parents that we have to notify. They're very important. Sometimes you don't get information out as quick. And if someone has a phone, it gets to, you know, on Facebook or something, that does happen. And it just does happen. But the thing that we've been very mindful of is not to send out the wrong information. So it takes a little bit of time to do that, to do that. So, you know, if people didn't get the information, we do the best we can to get it out. But it's our kids at that time with the faculty there. In this case, for example, you had brought your kids going to walk in that vicinity. You had a perpetrator walking through the cemetery, out the back roads to our headers. And that, we didn't know where they were going. You know, so we had so many things going and, you know, thinking about trying to get something out to parents, it's very hard for us. Newspaper's been calling us. We don't deal with them. We deal with our kids first and then we go with that. So those are things we're trying to manage. But inevitably, it's all fluid all the time. But the first thing we focus on, you need to know, are the kids and the faculty there. I met with the faculty the next day. Marty did a fest, she went around. You know, someone was actually shot down the block from the school. In fact, so those youngsters, they had to walk home. She, that day, met the faculty and she went around there, the classroom, talked to kids. Teachers were marvelous, talking to kids when they wanted to. Son did not want to do it. Stacy, Stacy, I'm sorry. Kelly had her staff there in support, the town had support staff there. All of those things are helpful. And in fact, to try to get things to normal, it really isn't normal. It really isn't. Kids are still having, you know, feelings about it, so we do the best we can with that. And thank you for that. I don't have anything else.
Question?
Dr. Stowe, just going back to the whole band uniform issue. Did we put out the issue? So I know that when they, when they came to the last meeting, I think what they had said is that there was money that was promised to be allocated that helped them with the band uniforms and then they, so can you expand on what happened there?
Yeah, it was, it was additional. The inside Board of Education was a twenty-five thousand dollar allocation for the marching unit. Inside that, there was, it's, the funds fully accounted for. Inside that account, the additional equipment that the, that the marching unit needed. So some of those funds were allocated over to the equipment and not the uniforms. So we're just going to move some money back to school.
That's why I can't explain what happened. Put the twenty-five thousand in, gets in their valley, we dispersed it.
Okay.
Apparently, it was the conversations at a level that we didn't know. And so, but anyway, they've raised enough and we can help them out.
Okay.
So we're going to do that. But that's sort of, we think, what happened.
Yeah, all funds are accounted for under twenty-five. It's just a question of how the fund is.
I just have a question about the band. Because the funding is for the entire band at Edinburgh High School because they have the jazz band, they have the mandrill band, and they have, I think it's three groups. So the funding isn't going to the entire?
Marching band.
Okay, the, oh, okay.
All the kids at the mar, yeah.
To the marching band, so, okay.
Equipment with the twenty-five thousand, they may have bought materials for the band.
Yeah, the equipment stuff, the uniforms, I put in, to the marching band.
Okay.
There was money allocated as well for equipment. It's possible some of that equipment does go to other, other areas. But the uniforms particularly work for marching bands.
But they get, they get dispersed. Where are my money? Does that answer that? You're going to go to budget.
Want to be DHS first?
DHS. Oh, no, we got.
A little, a little blood.
Yeah, yeah, Niagara Falls.
Yesterday, approximately two thirty, give or take, we got a call from a high school about a pipe break. I call a pipe flood. There was a sprinkler head up on C four in a back science room that in a sense became a cold pocket. It was a issue with the heat line over there and a couple of other things going on and froze up. So I had thought out, not one, but two sprinklers burst and started pumping water through the whole entire school. So it went obviously from four to three down to cafeteria. So we had a lot of ceiling damage on the third level. Made about a good inch and a half or so of water on the fourth level and also all the way down to cafeteria. Of course, had the kitchen tooling process, so we had a good amount of water. JP Maguire, which is the whole city, the board used on the restoration, were on their quick call list. So they were on scene by about three thirty or so. They don't bring over the humidification equipment. They had a crew in there until about one thirty, two o'clock at night. We focused particularly on the cafeteria because we were able to close obviously C three and C four. We needed the cafeteria as a function. Talked to Hubble Park, we did cold sandwiches today up there for service. And now the kitchen is now re-certified and cleared. Right now, working through the rooms, we've got a lot of ceiling tile damage obviously on three and two. The board's insurance company, which is Karma, has always been in, already been in contact, adjusted me now, they're tomorrow at nine. And we have a hundred thousand dollar deductible on our claim. I do definitely feel where it appears a hundred thousand dollars. The ceiling damage alone is probably going to be north of a hundred thousand. We've got, obviously, there's also some issue with floor tile. Some areas, obviously, it's glue, the way they're attached down. And a large amount of water's gone through it. They're starting to kind of get like soft. So we're actually going to put some temporary carpeting over them because there's some asbestos tile up there. So therefore, we have our environmental contractor out there. We're going to go over that with carpeting, probably will then abate in order for the sun. So right now, it's going to kind of be a temporary solution, just to go over the tile, which is perfectly allowed and acceptable. But we can't do it abate. We need about a week to close that whole building if we do abate. We have a couple computer labs got hit, lost a copier. And a good amount of tech box and some furniture and that sort of thing.
We've, thanks, Joe. They were there until two in the morning.
Yeah, I know, we had to.
City was out there hopping out, doing what they needed to do. Came very close to not having school because it's all interrelated with the sprinkling system and the air hammers and moving heat. But they were able to manage to fix that, so three-hour delay, it really helped. But one of the things with the board that we're, that you need to know is what we're doing. As Joe, we've contacted our, our climate person, the environmental person, to sample the air cast to make sure it's safe. We'll remove all of the tile. It'll be gone. Right now, they're moving just the wet ones, but we intend to replace them all of them. Just so that they clean up the whole area. The work that Joe's talking about is costly. We have a hundred thousand dollar deductible. It is asbestos in the glue. And when we do it, it's not covered, it's excluded from our insurance policy. We talked, we sent Ryan, Bigum, a note tonight asking, see if we can get some help on bill to pay for it. Because quite frankly, it comes out of our budget. That's money that if we have, we can put towards materials and things that we need. But, you know, we have, that's a little bit of a current physical plant up there. So we need some help there. But, uh, you know, we have, we have to look at the current, uh, physical plant up there, so we need some help there. Dan will, will be up, uh, I guess he'll be talking with teachers and, uh, also parents that will have questions about that. But, you know, we'll know more probably first part of next week about the actual damage.
Yeah, we think, uh, C four open tomorrow, uh, C three, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll say Friday, Monday, but, you know, we'll know. Kind of, that'll probably be on a room-by-room basis as we see what, what, what's, what a condition it is if something.
So carpeting will cover the tiles so that they don't keep flipping.
Yeah, particularly the, the back hallway on C three, there's kind of like, you make the right turn going into the new section, and there's really a pivot point you turn, and those, those tiles are, they probably weren't very shaped to begin with, but clearly, you know, a few hundred thousand gallons of water have helped you.
Yeah. All in all, it was not as bad today as I thought it was going to be.
Just a few questions. Um, so this happened in C four?
C four, there's a back science lab with chemical storages, and behind that lab, a small room with a window, uh, anything back.
Okay, so I'm guessing it's kind of hard to tell, obviously, if it just burst or was it because it was too cold in the humidity?
Oh, it was, it was, it was, they definitely burst because of the temperature, no doubt.
So my question is, is the room normally heated? I mean, why was it not?
There was an issue with a fresh air damper, which obviously lets fresh air in, but I believe it's something that was stuck. There was some issue with that, so that pumped more cold air into the room. The, the room was, was, I got up there, the room was cold, I mean, cold though. I mean, you know, and you got a, a wind, a large chunk of windows, and it wouldn't take much to get a little bit air blown on those pipes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to, the reason I'm asking is not to blame anyone, but, you know, some awareness of the fact that, hey, it's cold in this room. Maybe we should ask somebody.
What, what's strange about it was, I thought it was some of the new piping, and that's the old sprinkler system that was done in back in the days. Typically, you run all the lines, you wind up with issues. All line was never there before, but that, that's, that system's been up there for probably fifteen, twenty years. So typically, if you have issues like Rogers Park, it's a good example, those, the, the science labs out there. Those, that water, and a couple of those classes were shut off. We can't keep it running. There's not insulation on walls to keep them off. Um, they, they'll just, they'll just literally just free sell them.
Um, maybe you have to ballpark the cost of this. You're gonna?
I, I think you're probably, probably quarter of a million, give or take. I mean, you got, you got at least a hundred thousand dollars for the ceiling, with just, uh, actually ceiling tile work. I mean, the, the whole entire ceiling and the cap has to be replaced. I mean, now we're going to match it with even remotely close. Uh, so you've got that. The kitchen tiles are specific because of heat and temperature, so there's special gypsum board dust above there. Um, you've got, good amount of the tile work, the asbestos work, if you do the abatement and then truly take out a chunk of it, you could probably talk about more than a hundred thousand. That's on the board's chunk. Karma, the insurance will pay for the tile, and even they, they make it, so they estimate a rip out of the tile. Asbestos is, is excluded out of all policies.
Um, is there any, any, uh, state program or, or, uh, for asbestos?
Now, there was a bunch, a bunch of years ago, there was a little bit of money around for that. If you do it as part of a building project, asbestos is covered. And like, so if you add up the high school, you, all that stuff is covered. But when you do it on your own, it's not, we had the small improvement grants for a couple of years ago. Stayed a lot of asbestos in one, the second one they did not. Uh, that was the last round, they sheltered.
And if, if we're talking to Ryan about legislation, we should give him a legislative use in on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we run tonight, we'll put together and see if we can do that.
I think we can do that.
Yeah, so again, we lost the copy. Oh, I mean, what? It's, I, I think it's in, uh, it's in really good shape. It's a, a lot of water flew through the building, literally about, you know, what's called thirty-six hours.
Is there a break over King Street?
King Street, there was a break, King Street Primary, there was plumber work up there. He had a break, a snap in one of those lines. Uh, that moved two classrooms for a little while. But that was, in a sense, just a, a camp.
And the city had a breakdown.
Water main break, West Side, Kansas, that didn't impact K S, and, uh, yeah.
The other thing is, I just, just add, I think, you know, the board should just be aware of the Danbury High School staff, from the administration to the teachers, and they went to three-hour delay, but they were all there this morning going through their classrooms. And so, I mean, just so you guys know, I mean, those are their homes away from home, and they, um, you know, to watch them go through their materials and equipment and, um, and then, you know, put on a smiling face for the kid like, and it was, it was tough to say, but I think you should be aware of their effort.
Absolutely.
Um, while we're on your, um, your update on the legislating piece, I had emailed a question about the terminology around bilingual versus E L.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because there is in the new E S, yeah, E C S formula, a weight for E L. And that should have happened last year, or this, for this year. And is that not the case?
We're still deciding. We're, we're curious to see how they're going to act with the form. I mean, the formula's there, but it's a question of what, what is followed.
They didn't use in the calculation.
They didn't use it in the calculation, even though it's written, it's written in the form, a fifteen percent rate.
Yeah, they don't follow it. And that's what we're trying to get them to say, is that, put it, it's in there, make sure you follow it, and then be attentive to it.
Right.
They didn't follow it. Um, our printout that we had, we estimated over ten years would be ten and eight.
Twenty, um, basically twenty, I think it's twenty, no, twenty, so the.
My understanding was not, not, that is what I could, I'll check.
And also on this, um, I thought we had a good conversation at the cave breakfast about the disruptive classroom bill, which was really labeled an act concerning student safety, which, talking to some other folks, this will definitely come up again this session. So just for, for our awareness. Um, and then also on legislation, um, will we be receiving the same updates from Ryan as we have in the past?
Yes.
Yeah, as soon as they come in.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the tracking, the bill tracking.
He, uh, was it today? He called and tracking, what was that about?
There was.
Some funding.
Um.
There was some fund. They're starting to go through some of the, some of the bills. As soon as they write one. He said it was, it was too, too soon yet to give some progress. As soon as they put them through, they're sure to write them, get them out to us. Don't guarantee. That second bill that Rick was talking about, the school climate bill, um, i- i- if it goes through, the governor did video, video it did last year, um, and if it goes through as it is now, because they had a subcommittee, didn't meet too often, and they came out with recommendations, not too much differently. Um, we talked about resources with councils. Money's going to have to go to resources and interventionists and psychologists, psychiatrists in another fashion. And that's going to be July first.
Behaviors.
Behavior. So, you know, it, it's going to move limited resources if you have them at all, all the way in that direction. And it really doesn't make sense that they're asking us to do it. You have no one in the elementary school. You have to remove students, you have to provide supervision of those students with a person that's doing it. You have to provide an evaluation, um, you know, and knowing discounts the need for work with youngsters that have disruptive behavior. But, but this bill really puts, uh, puts too much burden on, on the school and the district to react in a way for every kid. When there are a certain amount of kids, you really ought to spend money on it and help them. And, uh, I thought they listened that they, the legislators.
Yes, yes, they really did. And all the districts agreed on that. And it also goes against the whole movement for proactive and positive discipline, um, with restored justice and all that, so.
It violates I D A. There, I mean, there's like, you know, federal force, that here with the disabilities act. I mean, there's some current legislation that's been in place that it's, it violates by giving, um, you know, one person authority to make an end of possession.
I didn't write it up because I figured, like, one of the things with them is that if this goes through, you will see a market increase in none of the minority kids that's, uh, either expelled or suspended.
Right.
And removed, I guarantee you. Statistics are there, like it or not, and it's not just because they're misbehaving. There are things that are happening. And I said something that day that I found remarkable in the workshop I was in. I think some of the folks was with me last, two weeks ago, the state did a workshop for us. And they, and someone took a peek at all, all the research, you know, on suspensions, expulsions. And what they noticed that on, on the, on the data, that, that ninety-five percent of the data that they had for youngsters that were being removed was caused by five percent of the population, adult population. So she posed it to us in the audience, that we have really a problem, that students are a problem, so adults. The point was well made to us that we really need to reflect and look at what we're doing, how we're doing, mindsets, uh, in order to treat everyone fairly. This bill will remove a lot of that, you know, ability for us to do it. It takes the authority away from, um, the administrator. And in some cases, there was some legitimacy to people not following up, so I can't, I won't discount that. But it's, 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 it's really a massive overlay to handle a problem that's a slice of the problem, and that's the problem. That's my fear. Budget. We ready to go to budget? So I'll check the elements, right? I thought they didn't use that.
In, in the board packet is the, um, organization budget that Dr. Sell presented. It's all offered because they have a meeting next week, so we'll do the kind of, the power of, we've got some city council folks invited for that. So in a sense, what, what the board sees here is the current proposal will forward and be presented at the meeting next Wednesday to the board. A couple of notes, obviously, just based on some conversation today. You do have a guidance council proposed for Danbury High School and B P S staff up at, uh, West Side, so which will, will propose early in this operation.
As well as increase teaching staff to the secondary.
Um, so I guess in a sense, you know, we can, we, we can review what, what's here. I, I guess I don't want to necessarily, um, peruse.
Well, it's up from our finance meeting.
It, it has. We, we looked some, we looked some staff, and we did make some changes. Um, a couple of specialized, we did, we did put in our bilingual numbers as well. Uh, we did make some adjustments. So that was at seven grades, at seven special changes.
Pardon?
Uh, sure.
Can I get some changes? I think most of us were here from the finance meeting.
You were. Um, so, yeah, as, as we stated, the increase in, in the special education, we see four F Ts in special ed, K twelve.
It was three at the, at the last meeting that we had, and we're looking at, um, Danbury High School really needs three alone, um, due to the increased numbers. Have you seen tonight, they brought seventy kids in five years or so? Um, and they need, uh, two resource teachers to accommodate, um, the growing needs of both, uh, tenth and eleventh grade. Um, and then one self-contained teacher. So that is in the proposed budget, as well as an additional elementary teacher. Um, and we're really looking at observing some of the growth out of preschool. Um, so where that will be is yet to be determined. Um, my team is looking at structuring based on the incoming preschoolers into kindergarten. You know, what model would work best to meet that group of kids' needs, um, but definitely an increase in staffing there. In addition, additional preschool, special education teacher, again, to, um, look at the growth that we have there.
Primary and the special area.
Bilingual. Also, the change in staff and the overall contractual increases that I said to the board, until we kind of boil it and down, I call bar code every person, um, we did see a little movement in that, in that salary. So total salary increase of three point four million dollars going forward as well. So total budget increase would be seven point seven million or five point five percent overall. The, I mean, the, the needs are, as, as stated, in, you know, particular West Side, with the additional F Ts, they're at two point eight, plus the B P S, so it's, and, you know, they're, they're going to be definitely built there over the next couple of years as we continue to add those, those classroom spaces. As, as Sam goes to high school, um, you heard Meg mention the, the dean, you've got the dean of freshman academy in there, that's, that's, get, restore that position, as well as the counselor and the flight F T for high school, and, yeah, for all of them.
So at the budget meeting, I mean, we have my first step, uh, presentation, but this will give you a sense of where the money is going. And if you, you look at that four point five, that's just moving us forward. Um, parents start to go counseling, they commit the same argument, the social workers are going to make the same argument, uh, for many others. And we need to, we need to address them, you know. So, I mean, I think the idea of three-year budget is helpful because it shows you how we, you know, we need to do that social emotional piece. The board knows that you've, you've said to us, and we've, you know, we put the money in the class. And we didn't add, you know, around, around the teachers, the support staff, that we're going to have to do that, and your special education, uh, is growing, and your bilingual is growing, and we need to address those as well. So this is what you see in front of it. There's nothing fancy or dancy here. Uh, the technology stuff, Joe has been mindful of getting money through grants. You don't see much of that here.
Yeah, we've got continuous little lease of high schools without roll for next year.
This is just really people, um, and servicing to youngsters is what you see in the salary range, right? And the benefits. That's, that's basically it. This is not adding a bus, Joe, help me out. Did we add any?
No, we, we absorbed and moved, uh, things around transportation to kind of mitigate some, but we didn't reduce a bus, that, that never happens. Um, but we, we didn't have to.
That takes, that takes account for the buses you added this year.
Correct. No, we, yeah, we had some adjustment inside that account as well. Some of things margin moved around. And, um, that, that just three and a half percent raise across them. We're still looking into Bowag transportation going to the new region twelve. We'll part, talk up to a partnership right at Brookfield with our kids, so we're still evaluating what that looks like and see how many I D A kids get because we live at a goal that way, we're going to drive right through Brookfield, so it seems kind of, you know, crazy not to partner with them.
We've done the same for a bunch of our special education out of district, at Brookfield, at Oakford Bethel. Has the students going to the same location, we're partnering up with them on transportation, which has been helpful. Um, and they're doing a regional kind of committee that we all kind of partner together on where we have kids, so we know who to call, and we have S F A, you have a change there.
Can, can Ed Vance help at all with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That is, that is.
They, they create within that. So if you have questions on it, get them to us, then we can answer them at night, so they're, they're pointed. Or at least you have a sense of what's going on. Um, is the schedule, what's the approval process for this meeting?
Board, board votes February thirteenth, and then it goes on to the mayor. Goes to the mayor, says for February fifteenth, a charter, and then Dolp announces full budget at the first meeting.
So when does it go to the mayor?
Mayor, February fifteenth, it goes to the mayor.
So that's after the thirteenth board meeting?
Yeah, that's part of the law.
Again, uh, uh, my question would be, how do we gear up parents and community people to support the budget? You know, every year we get to this point where we'll have to start looking at, we know we're not going to get what we asked for. We know that of course. So how do we give the support to have people come out and support our budget with what we have here on this paper to continue the banner of quality education for the children?
I mean, I know in the past, we've done, you know, uh, budget workshops and put it out to all the schools during the day, you get, you get twenty-five people.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, what else do you think, to your point, like, is there anything you think that we can, we can be, be doing? Because I know we did forums and all kinds of stuff before to get parents involved in, you know, I think we did one, it was like literally twenty-five people.
Yeah, we did, oh, we did it for our.
Yeah, most of them were people who, like, like elected officials.
Yeah, you're like, yeah, like a war on Tom.
Well, we could make a better effort probably, you know, at my, P T O monthly meeting, to do something there, and they work with their P T Os here to inform them. And those folks are pretty, uh, right, right or wrong or different. Some support, some think it's too much, but their job would be to bring it back to their, their community, uh, and see if people can come out and talk about the budget. The teachers have indicated an interest to help out this time as well, so we have those two forums that are, that'll be helping us.
But can we send it out to all the schools as?
As an informational flyer that we talked about last meeting?
Right, yeah.
Sure.
An informational flyer for what?
The budget process.
To send it out to all, all schools, all staff, send it to all parents.
Participate.
You need to be very careful on the way we advocate for the budget. There, there are rules and regulations for that. But there are ways, we can announce meetings and, and the numbers, absolutely, and talk to people and answer questions about the budget. And whether we're going to have workshops, things of that nature, but that's pretty.
I'd have to say, I think, you know, and we, and I've been doing this years after year, after year. And we got, like, last year, we not went down to the city hall to present the budget to the mayor, you know. And when I got to, um, the school budget, I only had one person that spoke in support of our, you know, our budget. And, uh, to me, that, I don't so understand why people just don't come out, and we have kids in our school. And whether you have a child in a school is the right thing to do to make sure that children receive a quality education. And whether you have a child in a school is the right thing to do to make sure that children receive a quality education.
I think also what we need to do, for instance, just this meeting, where we had the, the people who were here advocating for the additional council, it's actually in our budget for Westside Academy. It's really hard to see that kind of energy line. Now, listen, we hear you, here's a budget, now we need you to show up at city hall and explain with the same kind of testimony you gave here in public, you know, speaking session at city council chambers. Not just us, because we have heard the need, it's here. And if it doesn't happen, it's not necessarily because we are not saying that it's not needed. We are, we have included in the budget. Um, is there any way though, and I don't know if this goes into what you just said, Dr. Sal, if we can just kind of like break this down in a way that parents are empowered to understand in a sense that, let's, let's look at this document like our budget, almost like a, you know, the way that we, at this level, we're looking, you see, that's why we're more like, how do they figure that out? I don't even know. Um, I think a lot of our parents will look at our budget, and they're going to see a lot of these acronyms, and they're going to see a lot of these things, and, you know, even though it's a document that we're putting out there for them to see, and they're not going to even know how to begin to look at it. So what if we did an infograph? You know, something that simplifies so that, for instance, in the nonprofit world, you know how you get those letters that you send out to a donor and say, a $250 donation means that you're going to be able to get 10 kids vaccinated or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Something that is more like a breakdown, so that then we can really empower parents to understand the direct correlation of the consequence of this not being funded, or at least us getting, um, if we're getting 100%, we're asking for, or the difference between getting 50% and 75% we're asking for, if, if that's even the case. So just an idea, I'm not sure if, again, if that infringes on any of the regulations in how we advocate for the budget in the conflict of interest of having people advocate for the budget, you know, when it comes to salaries and stuff like that. But I think it's something we should look at in empowering our parents to understand this from a different perspective.
It's sort of, you know, I think what you're saying as well, is it possible for us to do outreach to people who have come to the public speaking and done public speaking meetings specifically around, not necessarily what's in this budget, but people have expressed concern about different programs that they feel need additional budgeting? Because I think that that would be an opportunity to have, you know, conversations around, well, in order to get the thing that you want, we need your support for this part of the process.
Well, yeah, we, we can, I mean, um...
Talk to us, Dr. Sal. What do you want to say? What do you want to say?
Well, I just want to be very careful not to put the, the board in a position of advocating a way that, you know, can violate some FOI rules. That's what I need to be careful of.
Okay.
From that side. But, you know, getting folks and asking folks to come out and recreating this a little more user-friendly is all, that's all possible. And we can do. PTO was very helpful in talking to folks to bring, bring out, that could be one. The, the bad folks and the, those that have a self-interest here to come out and talk about whether it counts as a social purpose or bilingual can be asked to come out and testify. And we can do all of that, and that's possible, and that's, I would say, legal.
Yeah, we can take, take a city wire and like keep going.
I, I, I think this is something that we could also roll into the community relations committee, right? Our, our job is to get the message out there, and our job is to advocate for the budget that we're voting on. I do remember last year, when the budget was presented, we had a handful of, of parents and NEA members who came out in support of the budget that we were proposing. Uh, but then when they did the meeting that you were talking about, was during the, uh, spring break vacation. So most of those folks were either away, uh, or they couldn't make it for any other reason. So, yeah, you have one person. So I think everyone who spoke, who said this tonight is absolutely right. We need to try to do what we can to make sure that the public is aware of the needs, right? Uh, in a more understandable way, but certainly something that I think the community relations committee could take on. Get the word out.
Can you try something?
Sure. Whatever. Whatever.
Yeah, you're looking at me like, oh, okay.
He's looking at you, he's saying, ah, that's what I'm saying.
Good, okay.
Oil tanks.
Just under information, we, there are need educational spec to put an oil tank in there for state funding, so that's a lot.
What does that mean?
That's what you need to talk to the state, you gotta tell them you're replacing an oil tank for 10,000 gallons. You gotta sit there and say, so the next meeting, you'll approve the head spec oil tank. Dave, that's on you.
And Morris Street Schools' PTO received a $6,000 grant for technology. What was that through?
Morris, Morris Street PTO for technology actually doesn't, doesn't state the, uh, you know, it was written over the summer, and it was going directly to the PTO.
Moving along. Um, on the agenda, the board committees and PTO liaisons, we all have a hard copy from the intended 2019 version. Um, I think the intent was to wait for our newcomer. Um, now we are missing three, so, but I think, let's just plow through, um, what changes we'd like to make. Um, I know that Amy has requested some movement in the PTO, so maybe we can tackle that first.
I'll, I'll take that.
Ralph?
That was my call. If anybody wants to give a great plane, Fred. That was mine.
I would have given it up to anybody else, but I, uh, not my.
Do you have a statement out there?
No, no, I'm just backing this up. No, you can, you can take a great plane.
I'm going to assign Amy to Millridge.
I'd say that.
Any other?
I think depending on, it's not what the PTO is.
Oh, yes. Anything else on PTOs? There's room for one more at the high school, if anybody would like to join me at high school. And I would, I would like to see if, um, so is, is Kate going to just pretty much take over Mrs. Mill and our assignments? Or could I ask it on tour? Well, I put Amy on Millridge, okay, for Cathy, because she wanted some, um, a switch. Um, Kate, what, are there any particular you'd like to take?
I certainly could, could do the other two she's got, which are Rogers Park and Ellsworth.
I was looking to possibly see if I could consolidate and just do, and do, um, the, the ones that are Thursdays and then alternate. Um, so I already have Rogers on Thursday, I love the switch out of, um, Morris Street.
Richard has Morris speaking.
Yes, so.
And you'd like which other one? That's a third one.
So have both middle schools.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that would mean, mean that you would be interested in doing then instead of Rogers Park and Millridge, uh, actually, not Millridge, would be?
Alsworth.
Alsworth. Do Alsworth and Morris.
I vote, uh.
Your question.
Rachel, can you recap that?
Yes.
Um, so at the high school, it's just myself. Rogers Park is Emmanuela. Alsworth is Kate. Millridge is Amy. Morris Street is Kate. Stanley Rock is Ralph. Do I do something? Do you have something else?
So Emmanuela is only taking Robbie and Rogers Park, that's it, huh?
Do you want me to, if you want me to? No, no, I'm just, I'm just laughing, because I've heard you say great planes so many times. You really want me to?
My kids went through that, and, you know, surrounded corner from my house.
Yeah, that's August.
Are you giving up Shelter Act then?
Yes.
Rachel, you're.
Oh, are you on Shelter Act here? Oh, okay.
But Wiley has Shelter.
I agree.
You're the only homeboy to the high school right now. I'm making out, I'm new, we don't, okay. Kate's the high school.
Okay, maybe you?
So I would just like to start with the committees. Uh, I'm down for all these negotiation committees. You know, just because of the way things are going on, and it's an election year, and this is my last year, I think it's probably better to have somebody else. I'm happy to work with whoever it is.
It's always shadow you.
No, 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 I can just like help somebody else, but like I just, in terms of me being the lead for those negotiations committees.
So we're going to need teachers, which we should apply to, and we're going to need one non-certified for, for serving. Educators.
You can take me off of teachers.
All right, so we're on the same, I already told you the same, I already, I already told you the same. I'm splitting that. I'll teach you first.
No, you don't want me on that.
I'll do teachers.
You're our teachers. Two for teachers, and I can get away with one for students, too, but.
You don't want me on that.
I don't, just so you might be the second person to help out, like, I don't mind, but I just, as long as there's somebody else that's working alongside me, because I don't want, you know, my term to end, and then all of a sudden, there's nobody.
You could be good at midnight for it.
No, I'm, you could be good at teachers.
What time would be? Uh, summer. Teaching will be ramped up really through spring and summer. Custodians probably, it's late spring, probably, sometimes, just to get, but teachers will be doing summer. With, usually we have an arbitration date on the fall, September, August, September.
Okay, so, so for teachers, we have Lattice, and Fred will stay on.
Yeah, no, it's fine, as long as there's somebody else that's there.
Okay, all right. And for non, non-teaching?
Session plan.
We still have, we have Richard, but, um, we only need one, so. I'm going to take you off of that.
For which one's that?
For non-teaching.
Play, I mean, whatever's fine, as long as there's somebody else there.
Obviously, is that last?
Never. Well, she did, I only said that she did, I know she wanted to do it last year, and I couldn't schedule it, it just didn't work great. But I know she was interested in doing it, how must we provide?
I'll ask her.
Okay, ask. I mean, by all experience, I've much tried once. Yeah.
You did a teach one, that was great.
Uh, Rachel, one other one, I spoke into, uh, spoke to Richard Gennali about it a week ago. He said he had an interest in splitting, he had advanced one with me.
Okay.
Uh, because it's still a bit of a height, so we need alternate meetings. I don't know if that, that works with them, but if you don't mind just putting him down for that, too, and I'll make sure that it's accepted by the council.
Ralph?
I'd just like to do it, because I was on sites and facilities before, and super tense evaluation, and I have these off goes, and I didn't pick really after any place to reach, if that's okay with everyone, only since I have the experience on it the last four years while I was on.
You want sites and facilities?
There's an open space because Cathy, Cathy was on it.
And same thing with super tense evaluation, because Fred's taking, I'll stay on finance. Fred's going to take the teacher negotiation, and I'll cover it. I'll do the finance, the sites, facilities, and EDA.
And take your own policy?
Yes. Maybe Kate got a policy?
So we don't need.
Um, I'll give up my community relations seat with Kate, I mean, the policy's a good one, I just don't, Kate can work with me.
Policy a little, a little bit time-consuming this year with the Kate review.
Sure, that's what he does.
So that was going to be.
I'm happy to join.
You want coffee?
Yeah, I'll join.
Fred's.
I'm talking to myself.
So.
Maybe do.
So we're, he's going to say, okay, off the policy.
Right, well, yeah. Unless, there's still a space on policy. There's always.
I'm trying to make that straight line.
President of the table's there.
So Rachel, you, you are taking, you're going to do the, like, so you?
No, I'm going to.
So I'll do the E.
Okay, so that, so then, so then I need to find another assignment, because I'm on community relations. So is there one in the other one? Um, there's one on policy. Okay, Dan?
There we go.
I'm okay, I'm staying on all my committees.
You're staying on all your committees. Can someone, would someone be willing to step down from a committee for another, or for a spot for Emmanuela? She's only on one committee.
The class is all four, I think you can kill them with it.
What committee does she want?
Yeah, I'll go, if, if policy's open, it's possible. I think, you know, kind of working with the whole negotiation thing, I don't think. There you go, no? I'm ready. Was there another spot? I'd need.
Oh, how many we have?
We have one right now.
We wouldn't hurt to have two, because some of the.
I'd like to do that.
Two, two would be fine.
And then, uh, what you don't have on there are, because I think we do an ad hoc, um, interview panels, so we're going to need several, um, her administrator interviews, starting probably in March.
Yeah, I, I had mentioned at the time, we're going to have volunteers.
More Street. Uh, we're going to, yeah, we're going to have a couple, planning a hundred of these.
Probably need two or three board members.
Yeah.
May volunteer? I'd like that.
That'll assist, yeah.
Interview?
Maybe what we, you know, you like, you know, you like, you want to.
I've already done enough.
How about if we did this, and just take maybe a handful of names, and then we'll just work down the list as well. If you're available.
Yeah, you could do.
Okay, so.
We have Alsworth open, um, because that's an interim, we have an interim at Morris Street, that's two. For sure you have those two. And then, depending what happens, you might have a third over at Park, Assistant Principal.
Shelter Act, okay. Yeah, just hope her'll have data.
Sound, just one other thing, just committee-wise, I know you don't have it on the list, but the expulsion committee, again, we haven't had a need for that, but I know we do need to meet. Um, just something, I know you have to observe several expulsion hearings before you can participate, but I would encourage, um...
It's three, yeah.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Um, and so I would just encourage any, anyone that hasn't partaken in that, it is sometimes difficult. And by state statute, we have to give parents five days advance notice, and we have to have the process completed within 10 days. So if the kid gets expelled, we can only put the, or suspended, we can only, you know, we have a 10-day window with five days of advance notice to parents, so we do need people available.
I don't think, I don't know that a committee, though.
I'm not saying, maybe just kind of like the intervals, I'm not adding it as a committee responsibility. It's not a committee, it's not something we do often, and it's not something we want to have to do, but there are times and places where it's appropriate. Um, and I, and I just, you know, if people are interested, it is something that you, you do have to have some experience in.
And the minimum's three, we have to serve three.
There is that, correct? I know it was correct, yeah.
I just wrote the bottom.
Yeah, well, so I had proposed some time ago that we create like a committee for these expulsion hearings, and I was like that.
Oh.
But I think it was good, I don't think it was hurt, because I have like, like four or five people that are, that are assigned to, you know, this expulsion committee, uh, group, and then we can just roll. because I have like, like, four or five people that are, that are assigned to, you know, this expulsion committee, uh, group, and then we can just rotate the three members within that, like, committee or group, and it's not like we had that many expulsion hearings anyways, and it's just to create some consistency, that way, like, you know, Debbie isn't scrambling around trying to find people, and.
Just lessens your, it lessens your chance of getting somebody available for that day.
Can I just make a suggestion, sorry, for that, when Debbie sends out those emails, too, if you can also include a paragraph that says, you know, to participate if you're, if you have observed, or to observe, right, because I didn't even know that we had to observe three, and you cannot request participate, so even if I had volunteered, I wouldn't be able to do it, so I think there used to be a paragraph editor that says that, uh, just as a reminder, that if you have not observed three expulsion hearings, but if you like to be qualified, you can attend this one to observe, do you know what I'm saying? Because there's a missed opportunity there, we get the mail.
I'll take care of that, just a reminder.
Because I, I mean, I, I think we had one recently, and.
We have one upcoming.
Yeah, and I, I didn't even know that, even if I wanted to, I wouldn't be able to help.
Well, let me throw something else, as long as we're redoing the policy, you might want to consider, there is another way of doing it, you can hire a hearing officer, who does it, and then, I'm just telling them, and present it to you, that that's, if we have problems getting folks to the meeting, we have them, that's the only option we have, other than the way we do it, that's all.
But also, ti- timing, I think, comes into it as well, because if you're trying to do it at three, four o'clock, that's a stretch for people working the nine-to-five hours, so, if it's later on, I mean, is there a certain time that it has to be done?
No, it's after school hours, and that, you know, the convenience of the board and of the family to be able to participate in that. Um, typically speaking, you do want the administrator who was most involved in the incident or the investigation, um, and, and sometimes we're also working with a police officer if there was an arrest or something off school grounds or on school grounds.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that later, especially with the family, if they're working in something, four o'clock is a.
What I would suggest is it's helpful when you reply all to the email, that way people can say, you know, I mean, that's, you know, I'm available, or I can't do four, you know, we throw out four-thirty, I can't do four-thirty, but I would be available after five-thirty, you know, that, that might help us to facilitate it.
I agree with Fred about creating the list, though, because what has happened since a lifetime here is the same folks that, it's the same people that do the expulsion hearings.
So the need is, you want rotation, not necessarily a set group of people to pull on, I just don't understand the reason.
No, no, so my suggestion was just to have, like, you know, people that take on that responsibility, a group of four or five people that say, hey, as my, one of my committee roles, it's to sit on these expulsion hearings as an extension of that, I was also, I mean, I didn't get a chance to talk about this, but it would be, you know, having expulsion hearings on a set day and time every month, so like, let's say it's every other Tuesday, or the second Tuesday, or second, whatever it is, just something, I mean, just to create some consistency, instead of like scrambling and saying, hey, we need to get a day scheduled, we need five days notice, and it needs to be like, within ten days, and it just, that's all of the suggestions.
A couple of things just to think about, the part of the committee, I would just caution, and I'm sorry that I brought it up attached to it, but just in roles, I don't think that it's appropriate that, it's not something we're, we're in favor of doing and doing frequently, but I think really just packing on to Kim was saying, who's interested in interviewing, I need to know, it would just be helpful for us to know who is interested in, even if you wanted to send myself or Debbie, listen, I'm available these days and times relatively, work in my schedule, I'm not available on Wednesdays, whatever that might be, um, as it is, um, you know, sometimes now, if you have, you have to get these scheduled.
But I also think would help, and if we go back in my younger days on the board, when we used to do expulsion hearing, uh, we have eleven members on the board, and we shouldn't be scrambling to get, Debbie should not be scrambling to get people to do expulsion here, we can go back and looking at having the expulsion hearing at six-thirty, and that gives everybody an opportunity, we never had them back in my younger days on the board, three-thirty, four o'clock. So if we could look at, go back at six-thirty, that gives all eleven board members, because everybody do work, and to give them the opportunity to participate.
That, that is fine, I mean, I don't have an issue with that, and that works best for our.
Just a show of hand, six-thirty is better than four-thirty, yes.
Six, yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Um, that's it for committees.
I'll make a motion, I think it turned, uh, meeting.
Oh, we have board reports, communication, comments, first, we'll do that.
I like the way you take my time, it's all ever.
I just want to mention, there's a cave day on the hill on March twentieth at eight-thirty at the Bushnell Hartford, which is another opportunity for us to chat with legislators.
No.
That is March twentieth, cave day on the hill at the Bushnell. Anybody else? Comments, communications?
Any workshops, uh, do we got, when's the, we have one next week.
Max one's in the budget, uh, January third, uh, seven o'clock, there's an ad hoc before then six, right, Rachel?
Right.
Oh, there's also an enrollment study on February thirteenth at five-thirty, I think, you just sent us.
We, the board just got a copy of the hot off the press enrollment, so, just a problem.
Rachel, what was I thinking for the, um, March twentieth?
This is, that, that's the cave one, they've had to reschedule the, um, trying to get Danbury.
Oh, Danbury.
Yeah, trying to get that.
Really?
Yeah, sometimes, like, as we did last year, they're working on something, they don't have a date.
We get any masks up?
Getting masks.
My final words. Um, it's because I wasn't here that time. And I know it's two months away, but I just want to start preempting everyone from now until then, uh, the Danbury Schools and Business Collaborative, a board which Dr. Sal, Ralph and I sit on, um, is doing a wine here and food tasting on Friday, March twenty-second, starting at six P M. at Max Wine and Spirits, for those of you who don't know, Danbury Schools and Business Collaborative, it's really a mentoring program, a school-based mentoring program, um, we actually have mentor here tonight, how long have you been mentoring?
Twenty-two years.
Wow, thank you. So, if you can attend and support the Non-Awesom program, uh, we would love to have all the board members there, and, uh, I'll keep reminding at every meeting.
I know you will.
Second invite, Mr. Retrina, all in favor?
Yay.
Thank you.